And guess what? We're ready to go. I'd like to call to order the March 9, 2020 Salina City Commission meeting. I would ask staff if the notice under the Kansas Open Meeting Act has been properly provided?
Yes.
Okay. With that, we will do the roll call.
Mayor Hoppick?
Here.
Commissioner Davis?
Here.
Commissioner Franz?
Here.
Commissioner Hodges?
Here.
Commissioner Ryan?
Here. We would ask all those who are able to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance and a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, we do have, under awards and proclamations, it's my honor to recognize Fire Captain Lee Solden, who will be retiring, and if he would step up front here. Come up here and face everybody so we can see. So, I have a little, a few words to say about Captain Lauren L. Solden. He started with the Salina Fire Department, October 1994, as a firefighter, EMT. He was promoted to fire engineer, March 1, 1997, promoted to fire lieutenant, September 18, 2006, promoted to fire captain, January 15, 2008. And a few of the accomplishments he's had in his career, he worked with the county GIS and emergency management to build a new map book for the fire department, researched carbon monoxide detectors, and convinced the Salina Fire Department staff to implement them on all medical IRBs. This idea has now been adopted by the North Central Board of EMS and is being utilized across the state of Kansas to hopefully prevent responders from unknowingly walking into a scene with elevated levels of carbon monoxide. Worked with the computer tech department in the development and deployment of mobile data computers throughout the Salina Fire Department's fleet of vehicles, was given the duties of SFD Airport Crash Fire Rescue Coordinator. These duties involved working directly with Tim Rogers, the Executive Director of the Salina Airport Authority, in organizing dual response criteria for both the Salina Airport Authority personnel and the Salina Fire Department personnel. Developed GIS mapping software with the guidance of the city of Salina, GIS Supervisor Keith Ganzemuler?
Ganzemuler.
That's easy for you to say, thank you.
It's a mouthful.
For emergency response for the fire department. It not only provides address location, but has expanded over the years to contain aerial photography, floor plans for nursing homes, businesses, schools, and lockbox locations. It also contains detailed information on 119 target hazard locations across the city of Salina. Captain Lauren Solden has also been, has certification as firefighter 1, firefighter 2, fire officer 1, EMT 1, ARFF specialist, hazmat technician, Incident Command System 100, ICS 200, ICS 300, ICS 400, National Incident Management System 700, National Incident Manager System 800. Captain Solden, as we can tell, you have helped make Salina a much safer place to live. We want to thank you for your many years of service and hoping congratulate you on your retirement and wish you the best.
Thank you very much.
It's not always that you get to, Rick, recognize someone that has spent that much of their career in one department, and we are very honored to have you do that, so, again. Okay, with that, we will move to citizens forum. This is a point where a citizen desiring to speak on an item which is not on the agenda may do so. Discussion is limited to five minutes.
Big shock. Deborah Corrales?
You might recognize Angie. Lacy is the dog. They both used to live here in Salina. They said that Lucy was a pit bull, and they did DNA on her, only she was 25% Burmese Mountain Dog, 12.5% each of Bull Terrier, Boxer, and Staffordshire Terrier DNA. The wisdom panel that was used at the time could only identify 157 different AKC-registered dogs. They now do 350 types and varieties. But then, one of our local vets decided, after he said it was his dog, he would demand a DNA test, did one on his dog. And when it came back not what he thought it should, all of a sudden, DNA was inadmissible in the municipal court for dogs. I'm not going to mention any names because they know who they are, and this isn't about bashing anybody. This was back in 2009, 2010. Kansas City man found guilty for killing a person using dog, or cat DNA in 2009. Dog DNA helps convict murderers in 2000, or 1998. There's also in your packet some information on how DNA is used. And then I thought this was kind of cute, five other animals that helped with DNA except for the grasshopper, that they found a leg on the killer and the body on the victim, and they matched it up, and they, they found that the, that's how they found killers. And I know some of you are sick of seeing me, but you're stuck with me. I went to the Junction City meeting when they voted to repeal the breed ban, and I got to tell you, the city attorney that did that presentation, you could not tell what side of the road he walked on, unlike ours. It was so biased, unfair, and based on non-fact, using newspaper articles to say how many bites for pit bulls attacked in Salina, when every agency will tell you, you can't do that because you can't breed identification by visualizing it. I'm coming back every Monday, taking my five minutes, and preaching to you guys, because this is wrong. These dogs that they're calling pit bulls aren't. And scientific evidence can prove that they aren't, and we're not using it. And a lot of people are buying dogs when they're puppies at eight weeks, and then when they turn adult, all of a sudden, they got a square head, a short tail, and a smooth coat, and they're pit bulls. They've invested money, they've invested time, they've invested love, and then we take them based on the way that they look when they're not what we're calling them. That's not fair. Carl Ryan, when you were sitting right there in my Hoppicks, you looked me dead in the eye and said, "I don't like judging things on the way they look," yet you voted to do just that. It's wrong. See you next Monday.
Okay, and you're welcome, that's part of our freedom of speech, and you're more than welcome to come. And I do want to maybe correct one thing, I don't remember our city attorney guiding us one way or the other, at least not.
No, no, Junction City's city attorney.
But you said our city, you said you couldn't tell, you, and you said, you, there were an accusation that our, our city attorney led us one direction.
No, what I said was, the, the city attorney, their presentation, you could not tell what side of the road he walked on, unlike ours. Ours was all about the dog bites that supposedly occurred. A book that, that was written by an attorney with no, absolutely no dog expertise was what you guys were given to read, instead of a book that kind of walked down the road, and you could not tell, unlike us. We were like, 15 bites here, 15 bites there, blah, blah, blah. It was very biased. You can play it back if you want, I've watched it 10 times.
Okay. I don't believe our city attorney gave us a direction either way, so.
No, I didn't.
Okay, I'm not going to argue, okay?
It was Chris Cotton who did it. It was Junction City's city attorney that did theirs.
Okay, I just want to...
I do appreciate that, Mayor. From the same point, I have, well, I've never...
Sorry. If I did, but it was, it was Junction City's city attorney.
Your comment was just a little misleading, I just wanted to clear that up.
I understand that, and I, the only thing I'd say quickly is that, I understand, and that is the role that he or she, wherever the city attorney might be, should take. It's a, it is a policy question. In Kansas, it's not a legal question, because the governing body has the authority to go either way. I don't believe I've ever articulated a position, either publicly or privately...
I was just comparing their city manager to our presentation, didn't mean that you were the presentator.
I understand, but I just wanted to make clear, I, I've known that it is not my role to assert a position in my role as city attorney. I didn't know if you were possibly referring to someone else, or, or thought that I had in some way, but I, I have not intentionally, whether publicly or privately, really spoken to that.
Okay, thank you. Do we have anyone else to come before the commission under citizen forum? Okay, we have no hearings on specific items, so we'll move to consent agenda.
Item 6.1, approve the minutes of March 2, 2020. Item 6.2, award contract for the 2020 asphalt mill and inlay, project number 20016 to APAC Kansas Incorporated, shares division of Salina, in the amount of $810,636.80, with an $89,363.20 construction contingency, and a total project authorization of $900,000. And authorize the city manager to sign a memorandum of understanding to partner with Saline County to mill and inlay a portion of Centennial Road at an estimated cost of $66,775, with a $3,225 construction contingency, and a total project authorization of $70,000.
Do we have any items which the, any commissioner would like to have removed from consent agenda? Okay, if not, I'll accept a motion for approval.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we approve the consent agenda as presented.
Second.
And a motion and a second to approve the consent agenda items 6.1 and 6.2. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Consent agenda is approved, five to zero. That moves us to administration, 7.1.
Item 7.1, consider bids for city of Salina to purchase self-contained breathing apparatus and ancillary equipment.
Our Chief Royce, how are you doing today?
Hello, Chief Turner. Chief Royce is out today. I come before you this afternoon to seek approval for the purchase of 54 air packs and 110 cylinders to replace the existing department's apparatus that is over approximately about 15 years old, several cycles behind on NFPA standards. We went ahead and went out for bid about a month ago, received two bids back, one from Feld Fire and one from Municipal Emergency Systems. The first bid back from Feld Fire was for $434,817.82, and Municipal Emergency Services bid was for $482,501.52. With that bid, we're also requesting to replace our department's breathing air compressor at Station 1. It's about 15 years old also, and the last several months, we've had several failures with the system and had to replace quite a bit of parts with it to the amount of about $6,000 in about three months, just to keep it operational. So with that, I would entertain, this is my first time, so help me out if I'm missing something, so. I do believe that Chief Royce put on his request for your approval, for your recommendation award, the contract to Feld Fire for the amount of $434,817.82 for the SCBA's and Conrad Fire Equipment for the amount of $38,135.91 for the breathing air compressor. And with that, offer the old equipment, equipment up to the surrounding rural fire departments at no cost, and I know there's several emails going back on that right now, but the second recommendation is to award Feld Fire again with the amount of $434,817.82 for the Scott SCBA's and Conrad Fire Equipment for the amount of $38,135 for the breathing air compressor, and like I said, offer the old equipment up, and instruct legal counsel on preparing the release of liability form, as discussed previously with emails. Or, action number three, postpone the consideration of the award to bid the specified date and time, provided staff direction in regards to amendments or city commission would like to request for further consideration, or do not award the contract at all to the breathing air compressor and SCBA's. And I would entertain questions.
Any questions?
Too short, is, I'm assuming there's still some life expectancy in the equipment? We're replacing it just because it's old and you anticipate...
Right now, our operational budget for SCBA's for the department is, is right around $21,000. In the last three years, we've seen an increase in costs, just to keep them operational and running. We have to test them every year to make sure they function right. That's an NFPA standard. Just last year alone, we went over our budget by $8,000 just to keep them operational. So we're just seeing with the age of the apparatus, more continued cost to keep them running.
And the rural fire? That's hard to say twice. The rural fire districts, they have the funds to continue that testing?
Yes.
All right. And is there any salvage value, I mean, recycling, I mean, from the Feld Company? Is that an option?
No. In 2004, when we purchased the initial air packs, the ones that we're trying to replace, they were purchased off of a FEMA grant to begin with, and with the FEMA guidelines, we can't, of course, sell them for any type of money, we have to give them away for liability reasons. And there's a Kansas statute right now that says that if we were to give them to another department, the department receiving receives, or they, they take the liability away from the, the department that's giving, giving, giving them to them. Sorry.
So the manufacturer doesn't have any, there's no use to them for as melting the metal?
Yeah, they're obsolete, according to Scott.
Okay. Is there any public comment? Okay, if not, I will bring it back up front to the commission.
Mayor Hoppick, I move we award the contract to Ed M. Feld Fire Equipment Company in the amount of $434,817.82 for the Scott SCBA's and Conrad Fire Equipment in the amount of $38,135.91 for the breathing air compressor. Offer the old equipment to surrounding rural fire districts at no cost, and instruct legal counsel to prepare release of liability to be signed by the district's accepting equipment.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the purchase of SCBA's and the breathing air compressor. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That's approved, five to zero. See how easy that is?
Yeah.
There you go. Come back anytime. Okay, that leads us to 7.2.
Item 7.2, award contract for minor concrete rehabilitation manhole adjustments, project number 20018.
I do not see Dan.
Dan is out, and I will be explaining this one to you folks tonight, Mayor, Commissioners. And we're here to talk about the contract for project number 20018. It's categorized as minor concrete rehabilitation manhole adjustments, but there's several different funds that'll be actually used on this. This is a pretty straightforward contract, and we could have placed this on consent agenda, but we did want to explain to you the process that we went through the last few years, and then what we're doing to rectify the solution. Once the sales tax was passed in 2016, the city had a lot more funding available to do surfacing work, and we do a number of different types of surfacing projects with that money. Chip seals on more of our rural, kind of no curb and gutter type roads, micro-surfacing, either a single pass or a double pass. Normally, that's anywhere from 3/8 to a half inch thick when we do a double pass. Ultra bonded asphalt surface or U-bass, ultra-thin bonded asphalt surface or U-bass is typically about 5/8 of an inch thick. So normally, on those types of projects, we would not do manhole adjustments. Only on our overlay type projects, we would do a manhole adjustment. Now, the problem is, is that's assuming the, the manhole was flush to start with. As you know, many of our neighborhood streets have not seen work for quite a while. Some of them had previous overlays, some of them had previous micro-surfacing work on them, so there was a, a little bit of a dip at the manhole before we ever started. We didn't measure those individually for relocation initially, because we wanted to try to use a new process. And I, I know each of you probably remembers the experiment on Ohio Street a couple of years ago. We tried, it took us a while to get them in, but once we got them in, we tried to install those. They weren't necessarily as adjustable as advertised, they did not perform as expected, and because of that, we decided not, not to continue with that adjustable ring and cover adjustment that had worked successfully in other places. So we're back to doing manhole adjustments. Well, in the meantime, we had decided not to do them in 16, we were experimenting in 17, already had this stuff let for 18 and 19, so we've got a couple, three years' worth of surfacing projects out there that need manholes adjusted. And this money was originally, would have been included in those projects for asphalt, micro-surfacing, and U-bass, so that's where the money is coming from to pay for these. The manhole adjustments cost anywhere from $1,200 to $1,500 apiece, and this is a catch-up provision to do the, to finish up the arterials, and to do most of the ones on the neighborhood streets. And we chose an inch and a quarter as kind of the split. We measured them both ways, but inch and a quarter is kind of the place where we would get the worst of them this year. If we continue to see, receive complaints, or there's isolated locations, we will look into those next year, but this was quite a chunk of money. We wanted to address the most serious problems. It's difficult to say on manhole adjustments, because a lot of them are either in the medians or next to the curb that you wouldn't normally drive over them anyway, but we are going back, and, and you can tell by the map, it's, it's an extensive list of locations we'll be doing this year. But this is a small portion of the over 6,000 manholes and 2,500 water, water valve boxes that the city has in inventory. So it's, it's, what we're going to do to fix it, as you know, Commissioner Hodges had asked last week, with the projects that we're doing this year, we're doing the manholes with those projects that will need adjusted, so that is our plan moving forward. We had several bids on the, the manhole adjustment this year. The low bid was Lancaster Construction with a bid of $169,550. They was a low out of four bidders, very close to the engineer's estimate. They have a long history of doing work here in town, local contractor, have performed well for us in the past. As I noted, funding is coming from the micro-surfacing, ultra-thin bonded asphalt, milling overlay, and the, the small concrete repair, so it's a combination of funds to, to fund this project. And with that, we would request that you approve the minor contract, contract with Lancaster Construction in Salina for the amount of $169,550 with a $5,450 or a 3.2% construction contingency for a total project authorization of $175,000. Now, you can choose to do that, you can do that with amendments, you can postpone it if you have further inquiries, or you can direct us to do something else. With that, I'll stand for questions.
We'll start down here. Commissioner Franz, you have any questions?
Is the inch and a quarter some kind of industry standard, or is that just something that our staff's determined based on the complaints received and so on?
The, most of the complaints, the people here in Salina, we've had a few that were, were definitely too deep for, to leave, and those were the ones, they were over two inches that people have complained about. Typically, less than two inches, we haven't got a lot of complaints. It depends on the traffic, it depends on the speed, a lot of it depends on the size vehicle that you're, you're in. We, we did extensive research in the smallest Nissan we could find, and four of us drove around and hit bumps, you know, 30 and 40 miles an hour, and tried to determine what we felt like was suitable and not suitable, because there is not an industry standard. We've tried to look it up, we've tried to do research, there's no industry standard. It's, the, the one and a half to two inches that were left the previous years are fine if they're off to the side or nobody hits them. If you're going at a higher speed, or if you have a, a small car with a small diameter tire, they actually fall into the hole further than a bigger tire will. We have some manholes that are full size, and then we've got some water ones that are smaller, so even those, those, it depends on the size car that you're in, how, how big a bump you feel, but there is not an industry standard for this.
Okay.
This is for 17 items? Is that right? Nine manholes and eight valves, or?
No, no, this is, this is for nine of the remaining valves, or...
Of the 117.
Nine, nine remaining on the arterials, eight valves and on arterials, and then 117 neighborhood streets that will also get done as part of this, so. Almost 130 different locations are going to get done as part of this project.
Still expensive per manhole.
It is, well, that's, we were weighing it, you know, you can do a block of micro-surfacing for what it costs to do three manholes, so it's, if you have three manholes in that block, it doubles the cost of the project.
Is it less expensive for them to do the manholes when they do the resurfacing that we're doing now? Or is it just added in and we don't see the, the charge?
They're bid individual, but it's, it's still about the same price.
Same price.
We thought by splitting them out and going with a bigger contract, a citywide contract that would do all of the different types of surfacing, we would see some sort of benefit, and we really didn't. We had local bidders, and we had one bidder that came in from out of town, about the same price, same quality, it's still just, it takes a while, because they have to tear out the existing ring and cover, pour new concrete with the new ring set in it to the proper grade, and then put the new lid in after it's all, this concrete's set, and, and it can allow traffic on it. So it takes, you know, it takes three or four days per location.
And I think, as many of you well know, separating that out just creates confusion and citizen feedback about, the initial panic is they finished the road and they aren't going to do anything about the manhole, and then when they come back for the manhole, we just got used to driving on this new street, and now you're tearing it up again, so.
I was that initial panicked citizen who kept hitting one manhole cover in particular on Ohio, again and again. I never did learn.
So I would say the split approach was also an experiment, where we thought we might see, you know, cost savings in quality, but we realized that this is probably the most effective approach.
First of all, I'd like to thank you for, again, confirming that the future projects will include the manhole cover adjustments concurrent with the paving. And I apologize, normally I like to, you know, get a question to you in advance, but we had gotten a citizen inquiry a few months ago about manhole covers that you had responded to, and I didn't have time to look that up in our old email, but it was, it was submitted, I think, to the mayor at the time, and then Mr. Co-Watch ended up making the response to it, and I just, just for my own benefit, I was wondering if that project... And I just, just for my own benefit, I was wondering if that project that he pointed out was going to be included in the projects this year?
Do you remember the location? I don't.
I don't. I honestly...
We can chat. I remember the correspondence here.
The most recent letter that we received and I've responded to, it was a, apparently a very nice man, yes. A veteran, served his country, and we did inform him that the locations that he named were included in the project, the upcoming project, and he actually wrote a second letter thanking staff for the information, and we almost included it in the packet, but it was...
No, seriously, yeah, you should have.
It was very professional and it was kind of neat to get thanked for just doing our job, so.
Yeah, that's awesome. Okay, thank you. I appreciate that confirmation.
Commissioner Davis?
No questions.
So, real quick question. So when you're going from a one and a half or a two-inch depth, do you go flush then with the new, or what's the, is there, you said there's no industry standard, but do they bring it back up to being flush with the road then?
Yes, yes. When we do one, and it depends, we've got 60 years of manhole styles. Because of the way we bid projects in the past and the way we've done them, that we've got varying types of manholes, and we've tried to standardize it to one type so that the rings will fit in more than one location. But some of the older styles, the ring actually sits down inside, or the cover sits down inside the ring almost half an inch. So it comes with a half inch dip, brand new, even if it's flush with the top. So it depends on what style you're looking at, but when we replace it, the new ring will be at the surface of the roadway. We don't, we can't raise them up for any future overlays or roadwork, because unfortunately, you'd have a kind of a little bump going over it, but those are pretty damaging to our snowplows when we're trying to remove snow and ice in the wintertime. So a hole is better than a bump when it comes to trying to take care of the roads in the winter.
Okay. With that, we'll open it up for public comment if there is any. Okay, quiet group today. With that, we will bring it back to the commission.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we award project number 20018, minor concrete rehabilitation slash manhole adjustments to Lancaster Construction of Salina in the amount of $169,550 with a 3.2% construction contingency and a total project authorization of $175,000.
Second. Okay, we have a motion, a second, to award project number 20018 to Lancaster Construction of Salina. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, 7.2 passes 5-0. That brings us to 7.3.
Item 7.3, resolution number 20-7810, adopting the Smoky Hill Museum's ethics and collections policies.
Hello. Susan Hawksworth, museum director at the Smoky Hill Museum. I'm coming to you today for the, Smoky Hill Museum is in the process of getting ready for our reaccreditation, which will happen in 2022. We originally are accredited in 1997. Accreditation is required about every 10 to 15 years. This is to undergo a rigorous self-study and professional examination to gather detailed information about the museum operations, our mission, and our goals to meet the criteria for accredited museum. Included, this also includes reviewing and if needed, revising all of the museum's policies. Two policies that are vital to the reaccreditation do require approval by the governing authority, and that is the museum code of ethics and the collection policy, and that is an accreditation standard. The code of ethics must be a separate and distinct policy specifically for the museum, and it acknowledges applicable laws and appropriate discipline-specific professional practices. The museum's current code of ethics is very long and cumbersome and had conflicts with other policies and procedures that have happened over the years. So staff rewrote this policy, making sure that it aligned with the city code of ethics and other museum policies. We removed general language and made it more specific. We removed procedural information and aligned it with accreditation standards. This policy was reviewed and approved by the Friends of the Smoky Hill Museum Board of Directors as well as the Salina Arts and Humanities Commission previously. The collections policy supports the collection stewardship core standards of the industry. Major revisions were also made to this policy. The last revision to the collection policy was in 2008, just prior to the last accreditation. This, excuse me, this revision was, just had minor revisions to our 1990 policy, so it has become quite outdated and is no longer meets many industry standards and best practices. So staff also rewrote this entire policy. It includes appendices to allow for updates of laws and job descriptions without having to come back in front of you. It includes, it looked at the ethics section in the collections policy and made sure that it meets and coordinates with the code of ethics also in front of you. And it changes, to security and access were updated, as these were items mentioned in our last accreditation, that they were not, that they were needing improvement. And these include such things as restricting keys to the collections areas to certain personnel, museum personnel, not all museum personnel. These revisions have also been approved by the Salina Arts and Humanities Commission and reviewed by the Friends of the Smoky Hill Museum Board as well. Our current request is that the Smoky Hill Museum, that the city commission approve the recommended changes to the ethics policy and the collections policy in preparation for national accreditation in 2022. On a fiscal note, all work was done by staff and required no outside consultants. Coming up in 2022, there may be, there will be some budgetary requests, most likely in 2022, to cover expenditures association with reaccreditation and a site visit that's required. It is recommended therefore that the city commission adopt resolution number 207810, approving the collections and ethic policy for the Smoky Hill Museum. And I'm available for any questions, as are staff from the collections staff, Jennifer Toley and Hannah Monken.
I just want to tell you, I think you did a brilliant, your staff did a brilliant job in revising this in terms of looking at what we, where you started, and it's kind of a thankless and unglamorous and just big, time-consuming job, but this is so much easier to understand and to read through, so I just wanted to commend you on a job well done.
Thank you.
Commissioner Ryan?
Nothing here.
Commissioner Frands?
Nothing.
Okay. Do we have any public comment at this time? Okay, with that, I will bring it back to the commission for action.
Mayor Hoppick, I move that we adopt resolution number 20-7810, approving the collections and ethics policies for the Smoky Hill Museum.
Second. We have a motion, a second, to approve resolution 20-7810. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Susan, thank you and your staff for the hard work, and good luck with the upcoming accreditation.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, it moves us into development business, 8.1.
Item 8.1, sidewalk cafe license agreements, 8.1A, resolution number 20-7811, authorizing the mayor to execute a sidewalk cafe license agreement with PB&J Restaurants Incorporated, authorizing the construction and placement of outdoor sidewalk dining area in the front of Yaya Zero Bistro at 251 South Santa Fe Avenue. Item 8.1B, resolution number 20-7812, authorizing the mayor to execute a sidewalk cafe license agreement with Lighthouse Properties III Incorporated, authorizing the construction and placement of outdoor sidewalk dining area in the front of Starbucks Cafe, Starbucks Coffee at 257 South Santa Fe Avenue.
Okay, Mr. Andrew.
Thank you, Mayor and Commissioners. What we have here this evening is two side-by-side outdoor dining areas on the sidewalk on South Santa Fe, and so we're bringing them to you together because they're both located in the building being constructed for the Homewood Suites Hotel. Back in 2014, the city commission approved an ordinance authorizing an amendment of the city code to allow for sidewalk dining and alcohol consumption, and also approved a resolution that established administrative guidelines to govern those sidewalk dining areas. To date, the city commission has approved sidewalk cafe license agreements for Old Chicago, and they have not acted on theirs at this time, for Blue Sky Brewery, where they have done some preliminary work but not actually opened it, and then for Barolo Grill, which was not located on the sidewalk but was located in Strian Plaza. We've summarized for you on page one, the submittals that get submitted to have a complete application, which would include an application, an application fee, a certificate of insurance, a site plan showing the location of the dining area, a canopy rendering if there is to be one, information about the tables, chairs, and furnishings, and any lighting fixtures. In this case, we did not require submittal of the Kansas food establishment license because these are not open and operating at this time. But the process for review is that the applications are first filed with the city's planning division. We refer those cases to the downtown design review board, and then based on their recommendation, if it's positive, we prepare a sidewalk cafe license agreement between the restaurant operator and the city for your consideration. And if approved, then that agreement authorizes the placement of private improvements on the public property. Also allows for consumption of alcoholic beverages in the public right-of-way if that is applicable. We've reviewed both of these requests as the design review board. Both requests comply with all the sidewalk dining area guidelines, with the exception of Yaya's outdoor dining area contains 542 square feet. The limitation in the ordinance is 200 square feet, but the ordinance does give the design review board the discretion to recommend a larger area and gives the city commission authorization to do that as well. The area for Starbucks is less than 200 square feet. So this is the site plan for the area for Yaya's. This is the Yaya's interior restaurant. This is a west-facing door that, it's a corridor here, there's Starbucks on the south, there's a set of shared restrooms, and then the Yaya's dining area is here. They have another outdoor patio here, but this would have eight tables and accommodate up to 32 people in a sidewalk dining area. The other thing that's unique about the Yaya's request is that they are proposing to construct a canopy over the dining area, which you can see depicted here, and the fence and railing around the area will actually be tied in with the canopy. So what they're doing is they're coordinating with the public works department, and the canopy will be installed first, and then we'll come back in and finish the sidewalk because the supports, instead of putting the supports into an existing sidewalk, the supports will be put in and then the sidewalk done afterwards. And then Starbucks will have a canopy as well, but that canopy does, it's supported up top and it does not have any supports that would go down into the sidewalk area. The other difference with the Starbucks request is that it will not have a fence or railing around the outside because they are not proposing to serve any alcoholic beverages in that area, and the railing and the separation is required by Kansas Alcohol Beverage Control, and it's only applicable if you're going to be serving alcoholic beverages so that you clearly identify the area in the right-of-way in which the alcoholic beverages will be served. So both of these cases were reviewed by the design review board on the 23rd of January. The board voted 5 to 0 to recommend approval of both applications, and subject to the guidelines that we have in place. I do want to note a couple things that staff is working on as part of the downtown, downtown arts and entertainment ordinance. We're taking another look at the sidewalk dining ordinance and guidelines. Two things we're looking at are the 200-square-foot limitation, because to date, only one of the ones that we've reviewed has come within that limitation, and I think the initial 200 square foot was based on the assumption of the standard 25-foot storefront downtown. And as you can see, if you look at the frontage of this hotel, that's far more than the standard storefront downtown, and so the 200 square foot might be artificially low. The other thing that we're going to look at is the annual renew, renewal process. Right now, that calls for renewal, submittal of a renewal fee and review by the downtown design review board. We're looking at perhaps making that renewal an administrative process. And then the third thing we're looking at, we noted in our report, we presently have some language about discharge of wastewater from cleaning, and we're looking at revamping that language and not focusing on the wastewater discharge, but rather using language that just requires that the sidewalks be cleaned daily to prevent the buildup of dirt and grease and that there be no remnants of cigarette butts or trash after closing. So rather than trying to deal with the discharge side of things, we're just going to put standards in there for operation and maintenance of the sidewalk area. But with that, this, both of these come to you with a recommendation for approval by the design review board, and I'd be open to any questions you have.
Any questions from the commission for Mr. Andrew?
I don't think I have any questions specific to this project, but just in terms of, and you just touched on it, in terms of like our wastewater disposal. You know, that was a point of discussion earlier in terms of not wanting to discharge that water into the storm drains. Do we know, do we have any sense on where we're...
We have had...
Any proposed approaches?
We have had a lot of research in that area. I've been discussing that with Ms. Tasker and also with our public works people in charge of illicit discharge. One of the things that we were finding, at least in some of our research, we found at least three different jurisdictions where it was limited to just using clean water and sweeping. And then in those three examples, the, what would be the equivalent to our business improvement district would have a contract for periodic power washing. And then it would be at that stage where the discharge regulations would come into play when you're, we're power washing the sidewalks.
Would, i.e. like with a chemical?
Yeah. Well, I don't know if chemicals are used, but one of the things that we noted, the 16th Street Mall in Denver is lined with sidewalk dining, and they, they just make the restaurant operator responsible that all trash and litter promptly removed and swept, and then they have a, they have a contract for periodic power washing, and that is, that is the activity that would require that the power washing discharge be captured and not allowed into the storm drain. But for the most part, what we're seeing, as long as you are just using a hose and no solvents or detergents, then that is allowed to go into the storm drain. As long as you sweep, get the food particles, the cigarette butts first, so that's, that's the way that we're going to structure it. But as I have looked at that regulation and how it's been interpreted, it would, it would literally require that each of these establishments have some sort of floor drain in the sidewalk to make that work, and that's not something we desire in our downtown streetscape, so we're working on an alternative to that. But it, that is something that I think is something for further discussion if these become more, more commonplace, is, is that something where the BID wants to... become more, more commonplace, is that something where the BID wants to look into, not just related to this, but a contract for periodic power washing.
Thank you. I appreciate that update.
Any questions?
With regard to the Starbucks area, there's a 30-foot plaza there, as you say in your information memorandum, but just looking at the schematic, it also looks like there's a large planer box in that 30-foot area. Is there six feet of clearance between the edge of their sidewalk dining area? Still clear of the planer box?
From here to here?
Yeah, well, in between the planer box and what would be the front of Starbucks. I'm just wondering if there is sufficient clearance there, or is the planer box going to be sized such that it's, that might be less than six feet? It's a little hard to tell from the schematic, but...
Are you talking about the Mulberry side or the Santa Fe?
I'm talking about the Santa Fe side. That planer box to the front, is there enough room in there for the dining area plus six feet?
Yes.
Okay.
I was thinking it was on the order of, what do we think the width of that sidewalk is, John? In some places, it's 21 feet wide. Yeah, so, so from here to the front of the building, the total sidewalk width is 21 feet, and this is going to stick out about five feet. So you will have clear, a clear six feet through here.
Okay, and the planer box isn't going to encroach into that? Okay.
Okay, any other questions? Would the applicant like to say anything?
Good afternoon, Guy Walker, 500 Graves Boulevard. I really don't have anything to add to Mr. Andrew's presentation. I think he covered pretty much everything, and I saw most of the other, everything else was in your staff report. I also have Brian Flavin from PB&J Restaurants here, if you have any operational questions that I probably couldn't answer about Yaya's. But Lighthouse Properties is the operator of Starbucks, so I can try to answer any of those questions you may have.
Looking good.
Thank you.
I'm excited to see it all open. Okay, with that, we'll open it up for public comment.
Norman, Man, Salina, now that you've narrowed down Santa Fe, before you engineered this project, did you go to other cities and see the problems it's causing by narrowing up your streets? Because this already happened over here on 9th Street just about a week ago. Law enforcement can't make a U-turn. There are other cities that are doing this project that you're doing, so maybe you need to put money in your budget. You're going to have to buy some little ATVs.
Right now, we're talking about licensing agreement for sidewalk cafes, but thank you.
Well, but that's still related to this. You're narrowing up your streets, you're causing traffic hazards.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? Okay, with that, I will bring it back up front for action from the commission, if they wish to do so.
I move we approve resolution number 207811, authorizing the mayor to execute a sidewalk cafe license agreement with PB&J Restaurants, Inc., authorizing the construction and placement of outdoor sidewalk dining area in the front of Yaya's Euro Bistro at 251 South Santa Fe Avenue.
Second. Okay, we got a motion and a second to approve resolution number 20-7811. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? That passes 5 to 0. Do we have a motion on 8.1B?
Mr. Mayor, I move the city commission, pardon me for switching over here to the language provided, resolution number 207812, authorizing the mayor to execute a sidewalk cafe license agreement with Lighthouse Properties III, Inc., authorizing the construction and placement of outdoor sidewalk dining area in the front of Starbucks Coffee at 257 South Santa Fe.
Second. And a motion and a second to approve resolution number 20-7812. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? 8.1B passes 5 to 0. Okay, that moves us to other business.
Go ahead, whenever you...
Okay, I did want to bring up that we had the Equafest here this last weekend, and it looks like there was a large crowd over there, and I don't know if this is appropriate or not, or has been done, but I see the Celine County Board Commissioner, Bob Bidricson's here, and he spent a lot of time over there. Bob, would you like to take 60 seconds to say something? I've never seen you at a loss for words, so. And I know he had quite a bit of interaction with the group, so...
Well, thank you. I didn't come dressed appropriately to address the city commission, but I did spend a lot of time over there, just seeing how everything rolled and how many people were there. By my own estimates, I would estimate somewhere between 15,000 and 17,000 people, probably for the three and a half days that it was going on over there. I know that one of the events, this Chris Cox, that horse trainer and so forth, that the arena was full. So it was pretty impressive. And the Ranch Rodeo, if you haven't seen one of those, you need to go to one of those sometime, but I know that I was over there today and spoke with the people, along with our staff, and everybody was excited and very complimentary of the staff, both at TPEC and the Celine County Expo Center of staff and how helpful they were, and they've already said, "We're not going to go for the February dates next year. We want right back on the same weekend, in the same sites, and we want to deal with the city of Salina and Celine County." So it was well-received, and I'm happy to get them. I also took a pretty good tour a couple of different times, too, the parking lots, and I mean, the whole Kenwood Park area clear around the stadium and everything. I would venture to say that probably more than 95% of the tags were from outside of Celine County. So it did exactly what we had hoped, you know, it brought in a lot of people from out of town that I heard the hotels were full and everything. So anyway, thanks for your cooperation and help, and it looks like we'll land it again for next year, if we get a lease agreement going.
Yeah, well, thank you for being a good steward. I know you spent a lot of time over there, and they appreciated that, so...
Thank you very much.
But anyway, I do, I did ask somebody, and they said that last year, I think at the peak, they had 90 vendors, and this year they had 130. Does that sound about 150 vendors? So they, like you said, it was the fullest I've ever seen the parking lot over there, and some of it wasn't parking lot, so, anyway. Did you have something you wanted to say?
Yeah, I did one thing. I think you're all aware that Deputy City Manager Wood serves in the Army National Guard. Excuse me. And I think you're also aware that he will be deploying. Well, that time has come. I think tomorrow's his last full day before his deployment, so I'm not sure who's going to miss him more, me or his wife and children, but I wish him well, and we'll see how long that deployment lasts. I do have some preparations in place for someone to serve in an interim role, so I'm trying to get that rolling here pretty soon.
Do we have some kind of going-away reception planned, or is today his last day?
Tomorrow, I think is his last day. In the office, we're going to have a lunch, but didn't do anything any more formal than that.
And I know, Jacob, we wish you the best, and we look forward to your safe return, and want you to know that the community is here to support your family in any way possible while you're gone, so. So look forward to your safe return in nine months, is that what you're anticipating? Okay, so thank you. Thank you for your service. Okay, anything else to come before the commission? With that, I'll accept a motion for adjournment.
Move we adjourn.
Second.
I have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
We are adjourned.